For November 4th, 2025 is hereby called to order at 9:49 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Present.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benwellis.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bog.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White.
White here.
Mayor Lash is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion approved of the appointment of Sergeant Aron for this meeting?
So moved.
Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Next, I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll just stand and take a look at the pledge. Oh, and you guys didn't join us. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Al.
It's my understanding we do not have a 35-minute mayor's report. Amen. Next move to mayoral appointments. There are no, there are no mayoral appointments.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Well, yes, we do, sir.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to please read the rules for public comment.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment this evening.
Should we do the first two?
We can do the first two. We'll have the first take this podium and the second line up on the...
All right, first person, Annie Fish. Second person, Ron Hinterlong.
Annie Fish is declining.
All right.
Ron Hinterlong. And then the second person?
Joe Jackson.
Good evening. What I wanted to discuss is the police budget. What we've just been talking about with ICE and with the homeless, with the AID, it's a prime example of what the Aurora Police Department actually represents. With ICE out there with very little training, with very little direction, with very little teamwork, that's, that's been discerning on us. And with the Aurora Police Department, over the last 27 years, they worked hard in changing the philosophy of how police work was done. We didn't just go out there and run from call to call, homicide to homicide. We actually changed the philosophy on how we look at people. We learned cultures of people. We learned empathy and dealing with the people. Instead of the 27 homicides and working with the community, now we're down to very low homicide numbers, and we have support from the community. The bigger issue, though, is how did we do that? We did that through mandatory training. So you can't reduce the budget on the training because constant training is what gives us the ability to learn the forces continuing so that we don't just resort to violence out there against a citizen because citizens are human beings. We know that. That's why we're dealing with the homeless. They're human beings. So we work with the Hesit House. We work with the community. We know the empathy. We know the de-escalation tactics. We know the use of force can... And they also have an Office of Professional Standards. The Office of Professional Standards requires officers to, to document certain things that are done when you're using force, but it also holds the Aurora Police Department responsible for their own actions. So they're not, they're not just out there willy-nilly doing anything such as what ICE is doing. And they're working with the homeless, so they're not treating the homeless like a piece of whatever. They're treating homeless as human beings with a problem because we're all human, we all have problems. So I'm begging you, you know, Chief Thomas, he's a great guy. The Aurora Police Department has got a great command staff, and I would strongly suggest not even taking an iota out of their budget because they need the continued training and they need the continued equipment and they need the continued personnel in order to continue going forward because we don't want to go backwards. We really do not want to go backwards. You know, the mid-'90s, we don't want, ever want to see that. We never want to see what's happening, and the prime example is what you're now seeing with ICE. So that is what I'm using.
Thank you, Mr. Hinterlong. The clerk, please read the name of the next two people.
Joe Jackson and Matt Fogarty.
Mr. Jackson, you have three minutes, beginning now.
Thank you. I was not going to make another public comment, but I promised Ms. Alyssa Dockery of the Echo Development Center that I would read her letter because she had to leave early. Before I jump into that, though, I just want to point out there's been a lot of really great organizations and people highlighted here tonight and talked about here tonight. Ms. Dockery and the Echo Center is definitely one of them, the Echo Group. Mary Foltz and the Community Advocacy Awareness Network is another amazing partner in doing a lot of great work in the community. Sherri Spears and her Annie's Arm Initiative to help mentor lift, uplift, feed, and find resources for so many. J.L. Harris and his Rise Program with mentorship and peer leadership. Those are all amazing people and all doing a lot of really good work in the world of homelessness and serving our most vulnerable neighbors. So Ms. Dockery's letter. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight about something deeply important, something that speaks to the heart of who we are as a community. I'm here to talk about the need for a warming center and why this effort matters so much, not just to those who will use it, but to all of us. As the cold months approach, our local shelters are already reaching their limits. Many are at capacity now, and soon we'll begin to see wait lists. That means people, real people, members of our community, will be sleeping outside because there simply isn't enough room. We're not talking about statistics. We're talking about individuals, men, women, seniors, and even families who are experiencing homelessness, people who have names, stories, and hopes just like each of us. A warming center is a practical compassionate solution. It provides temporary shelter from the cold, yes, but it's also so much more than that. It's a symbol of our community's shared values. It says, "We see you, you matter, you deserve safety and dignity." Right now, our shelters are doing everything they can. They are stretched thin, operating at full capacity, and still turning people away simply because there is no more space. The establishment of a warming center would relieve that pressure. It would give local shelters a partner in care. By offering overflow space, we make sure no one is left on the streets when the temperature drops below freezing. We give our shelters the breathing room to continue doing their essential work without having to turn anyone away. And the beauty of this plan is that we are not alone in this effort. There is already a strong network of community partners, faith-based groups, nonprofits, outreach teams, volunteers, who are ready to operate and support this warming center. These are people who have been on the front lines for years, serving meals, handing out blankets, and checking on those who have nowhere else to go. They are ready, trained, and deeply committed to ensuring this warming center runs safely, smoothly, and compassionately. We often talk about the rights of individuals, the rights to free speech, the rights to safety, the right to vote, but there's another right that often goes too, too much unspoken, the right to humanity, the right to dignity, and ultimately, the right to housing. Every unhoused person deserves to be treated not as a problem to be managed, but as a person to be valued. When someone is experiencing homelessness, they're already facing countless challenges, lack of safety, exposure to the elements, health risks, and the daily struggle to simply survive. A warming center doesn't solve every problem, but it is a start. It is a chance for stability, for warmth, for human connection. It is a place where outreach workers can connect people to resources, medical affairs, and pathways to housing, and there is no way I'm going to get through the rest of this letter in seven seconds, but Ms. Dockery feels very strongly about the warming center. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thanks, Ms. Dockery, for her comments. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next two members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Matt Fogarty and Cynthia Serna.
Is Matt Fogarty or Cynthia Serna here? Yep. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next two people wishing to offer public comment?
Guillermo Rodriguez and Lindsay Hartman.
Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Hartman? Not here.
Yvette Robles and Ash Dragine.
Ms. Robles and Ash.
Michelle Curriel and Paula Flores.
Ms. Flores. And then who's the next person?
Bill Powell.
Bill Powell, if you'd like to get on deck. Ms. Flores, you have three minutes, beginning now.
Hi, how are you? My name is Paula Flores. I am in one of the, the patrolling. We call it community watch. We patrol every street, and I'm not omitting any, every street here in Aurora. Other people might see me and know me and wave. Other people don't know I'm even there because I patrol from 12:30 midnight until 12 o'clock the next day at noon. We do not get paid. We do it out of the goodness of our heart. We are the ones that are reporting when we see something. We see something, we say something. That's why everybody else knows. Now, I don't do this for me. Of course, you can see my, my skin color. I do it because of my husband. He's legal, but he has a DUI in the past. So what's that going to do? ICE is going to take him, too. That's what we're scared of. My husband has not left his house since the 16th of September. I will not let him go. I will not let him go anywhere. I do it for my children, my grandchildren, for my friends, my extended family, and now my family that I have made with the patrollers that we have now. I do it out of the goodness of my heart. And if no one, I can almost bet you, there's only maybe two that I've seen at the actual places when, when ICE came in. If you have never stood there and watched the children cry or the women cry because their husband has been taken, you don't know pain. And if you have seen it and you don't feel anything about it, you have no heart. I cry every single day, hoping I don't see it. That's for the ordinance. This is for the drones. What's going on with all these drones? What are going on with all the drones? Do you know how many that we have documented? We document helicopters. We document the drones. No one can tell me. After those drones, all of the drones are coming in the next day or the next two days, it's going to be bad. So we saw them the day before yesterday. We saw them today.
Three minutes is done. Appreciate your comment. I'll ask the clerk to read the name of the next person on deck.
Next to speak is Bill Powell. Next on deck is Nikki Coleman.
Mr. Powell, thank you. You have three minutes, beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening. Some of you know me. Some of you know my story. I've been around for a little while. I'm a retired police officer, Aurora Police Department. Started my career in 1977 as a patrolman. I've worked in a lot of, all the, the majority of divisions in the police department. I've held every, every rank in the police department except deputy chief, and I'm here today, I'm a resident of Ward 5. I'm here today to address rumors that I've heard about police officers being laid off. I know supposedly that we're having a tough time with, with economics, but what I'd like to do is just read you just something that I, that I had in my mind, and I'm going to leave because I know it's been a long night. Recently, I've spoken with residents and community members of the city who strongly oppose the idea of laying off police officers who serve on the front lines of public safety. This decision would undermine, this decision would undermine the well-being of our neighborhoods, endanger families, and sends the wrong message to those who dedicate their lives to protecting, for protecting us, to protecting us. Every day, our officers respond to emergencies, prevent crime, and build trust through their presence in our streets, schools, and at community events. They work long hours under immense pressure, often putting their safety at risk to safeguard ours. To remove these dedicated professionals from service is not only unfair to them and their families, it is, it is a disservice to every resident who counts on a quick and effective response in times of need. Public safety is not, and I want to reiterate that, public safety is not a place for budget cuts. Reducing the police force would inevitably lead to longer response times, fewer patrols, and increased strain on the remaining officers. These cuts jeopardize the progress we've made in building safer, stronger neighborhoods, and our communities deserve better. We urge city leaders to reconsider this harmful action immediately. Instead of laying off officers, the city should seek alternative solutions such as restructuring, restructuring non-essential spending, applying for public safety grants, or engaging in open dialogue with residents and officers to find creative and balanced approaches to fiscal challenges. We stand in solidarity with our police officers and their families. Their work is vital, their sacrifice is real, and their commitments to service respect, and their commitment deserves respect, not layoffs. Collectively, we call on city officials to resist the elimination of these positions and reaffirm our shared commitment to keeping our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next two members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Ruben Morales and Emily Bopri.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. You have three minutes, beginning now.
Good evening, council members, and thank you again for taking the time to review this ordinance with care. I want to speak briefly to what seems to be the center of concern right now, not the purpose of the ordinance, because I believe we are aligned in spirit, but the hesitation around the word "shall." I understand that some worry this wording may place too strong of a requirement on city workers, especially those who may have mixed-status families and who fear retaliation or attention, but I ask you to consider this. The very existence of that fear is proof of why this ordinance is needed. When people in our own workforce, the people who serve this city, feel afraid to document something they witnessed on public property, that tells us two things. One, there is a ready intimidation present in the environment. Two, silence is already being used as a tool of control. Removing the word "shall" does not remove the pressure they feel. It only removes the protection that would allow them to report safely, supported, and without guesswork. The intention of the ordinance was never to force city workers to act as immigration officers. It was to ensure they are not left alone in confusion or danger if they witness unauthorized federal activity. "Shall" means the city will back you. You will not be punished for reporting. You are not acting on your own. The city stands with you. If the word becomes "may," then the message becomes you're on your own, and that is the opposite of safety. This ordinance is not about punishing city employees. It's about protecting them and the community. It gives structure, clarity, and support to workers who would otherwise have to decide on their own and in the moment whether to stay silent or speak up. And let's be honest, without documentation, there is no enforcement. Without enforcement, the ordinance becomes symbolic, and if it is only symbolic, then we will have past a headline, not protection. Aurora has an opportunity to lead the state, not just in the intention to protect its residents, but in the courage to stand by that intention fully. So my ask is simple. Let us not weaken the heart of this ordinance out of fear. Let us not silence workers in the name of protecting them. Let us not trade clarity for comfort. The people of Aurora, over 1,200 who have already signed their names publicly, are ready for this. They want a policy that means something, and at a time when fear is being used as a tool against our community, let Aurora respond with something stronger than fear: commitment, structure, and courage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. I'll ask the clerk to read the name of the next person on deck.
So the next person on deck is Johann Salom.
Johann is probably not here.
Then, sorry.
I'll just ask Ms. Bopri, if you're ready. Your three minutes begins now.
I amplify everything that Ruben just said. I took great issue with "shall." I can't control my face, and that just like, just sent a shiver up my spine because if, and I'm glad that you acknowledge your white privilege, and I wonder, you know, what, what the rest of us who also have it or have not, like, are the officers nice to me because I'm white? Because they have helped me, and I appreciate that. I don't agree with, with their jobs getting cut, but I do think that if there are open positions and they're not being filled, then we could maybe put that money towards something else. I second the part about silencing people, like, if, if you guys are afraid, if we are afraid, if I am afraid, you know, and a giant man, six foot tall with a gun, doesn't want to escalate things or rock a boat, you know, and I would like to comment on that, that if people are so upset with an officer shaking hands with ICE, like, that should say something. That shows alliance, allegiance, friendliness, and, you know, I know that everybody has to see each other, and, you know, we could do a polite wave, but also, what if we just didn't politely wave to people who are, like, kidnapping our neighbors? What if we mean-mugged them or politely shook our head, or didn't so politely shake our heads at them? Wouldn't that signal just not, I think that we are so afraid of being polite, and the time for politeness is over, I feel, and all of these young people... time for politeness is over, I feel, and all of these young people are putting themselves in a harm's way, and I don't understand why a police officer who is a peacekeeper won't say, you know, I just wanna, like, you can do your job, of course, but I just wanna know, like, who are you taking? What is your name? Where are they going? Any of the other lists of things on there, because it should be our place to ask. Where are they going? What's their name? Who is their family? Where, what is an emergency contact? Wouldn't that be more of something that a peacekeeper would do? And I don't, I don't know anybody with a heart who would disagree with something like this, honestly. And it, it is disappointing to me that...
Ms. Bopri, your three minutes is up. Thank you for your comments. Will the clerk please read the name of the next two people wishing not for public comment?
Nadia Conhai and Brenda Lee.
Is Brenda Lee here? So Nadia, you can go first, hang out on deck. Thank you, Ms. Conhai. You have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you, and I want to thank the speakers who went before me for sharing their stories, and also to the, I want to thank the council for allowing the, the extra time for public comment earlier. Good evening, my name is Nadia Conhai. I am a longtime Eastside resident of Ward Four. I'm an immigrant and also Gen X, and this is a Gen X story, meaning I grew up assured of mutual nuclear annihilation. I saw things then that I never thought I'd see again today, especially in a suburban Midwest city. Besides traveling to the UN and the nation's capital in the eighties, I traveled to the two-thirds world, the global south. I saw troops patrolling the streets in a small island nation, but their faces weren't covered, so I saw their smiles. They didn't kidnap community members off the streets. Not that troops or anyone dressed like troops has ever made me feel any safer. Later in the eighties, I traveled to another two-thirds world, global south countries. One, there were stationed troops on the ground at the airport around our airplane when it landed. And another, troops walked freely around the capital city. Serious, but friendly, young people, proud to serve their newly independent country, protecting innocents from kidnappings off the street. And if you're wondering, yes, I was warned not to travel, but was also assured that no harm would come. Fast forward to a new millennium, 2025, and I cannot believe my eyes when I see armed men in camouflage abducting my neighbors off the streets of Aurora. It's Orson Welles, 1984, when lawlessness is rebranded as federal law. I, I know that there's only so much we can do as a city, but, you know, facts are facts. We need ICE and CBP out of our city. They are terrorizing us, and I know, like I said, our scope is limited here, but even when I visited the border, I, you know, didn't witness any such absurdity. I, yet today, our young people's lives are being shaped by masked men harassing and kidnapping fellow Auroraans, just as I was shaped long ago. Regarding the warming center, a couple years ago, I had a friend stay in my car for much of the winter. He had nowhere to go, and my car was a poor option, but it was better than exposure to the elements for someone with complex issues. Thank you.
Your three minutes is done. Complete. Madam Clerk? Please ask Brenda Lee to speak, and then we'll bring the next two people up.
My name is Brenda.
You have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Brenda. Me and my children have been chronically homeless for probably the last 20 years. We work very closely with the Hasset House. I'm all for a warming center for my, my fellow brothers and sisters and those less fortunate, but I think that there should be something in place to where somebody's gonna govern over what's actually going on, and not to be sugar-coated. I've learned a new quote lately. I seen on Facebook, and it says, "I can't believe what you say because I see what you People say they're gonna do one thing, but it, it's not that, it's something else. So I look at all of you, all of you, till you say you care for the less fortunate. I'm one in the number. I'm on ground zero. They're my brothers and my sisters. I'm there, I speak to them all the time. And everybody says, oh, they care. We talk to them. For 20 years, I've never talked to anybody from the city or nobody, nobody's ever came and said, hey, how do you guys feel? What's going on? This, that? It's all about the money. The money. Where's the money gonna go? Where's the money gonna go? So I'm looking at it like, whose friend is, you know, gonna be over here to, like, get the money or whatever? Is it gonna go for where it says it's gonna go or whatever? Are you really, do you really, really, really care about the less fortunate? Because I sit there and I talk to them. And I ask them, have you guys talked to anybody? Has anybody come talk to you? They say, no, we haven't seen, we haven't heard anybody. Not one of them. And I know a lot of them. I've been homeless for almost 20 years, on and off, and so I know a lot of people. And you can make your mouth say anything. I've heard a lot of BS here tonight. And like with the ICE agents and stuff, you say you care, show that you care. You can say a lot of stuff, but I don't see it, and I'm sure a lot of my fellow people here don't see it either. It's a lot of talk. If it was you and yours, we wouldn't even be having this talk. You wouldn't appreciate it. If it was you and yours, you wouldn't like it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing not for public comment.
Lupe Garcia and Marissa Martinez.
Lupe Garcia and Marissa Martinez. Next.
Lori Watts will be next, then.
Your three minutes begins now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here to pray. Before I pray, though, I wanted to share just a little story of something that happened to me today. I had a little bit of car trouble, and my husband was helping me get my car on the road again, and a stranger stepped in and he helped him. And the stranger, you know, didn't know anything about any of us, or either of us, but he took the time to go ahead and help. He didn't need to do this, but his compassion, his empathy, his concern outweighed his constraints. He was a light in the darkness for us today, and he helped me out. I tell you this because much like him, you all, you all, you are lights in the darkness for people. What you do counts. What you, what you move forward counts. So I wanted to thank you all, but I also wanted to thank everybody, the, the people of Aurora, because all of you stand ready to help a stranger in need, to help lift each other up. You know, I want to thank you all for being good to each other, for being kind to strangers, for standing together in the gap against danger, just as Jesus has done for us. For being the love to each other as Jesus commanded us in John 13, 34, and 35, where he says, "A new command I give you: Love one another as I have loved you, so you must love one another. By this everyone will know that you are my disciples, if you love one another." So thank you all for being that blessing. All right, well, I'm gonna pray, and I'm praying right now, I pray, Jesus, for peace and unity for this city, for the state, and for this nation. I pray that you will heal our lands and heal our hearts. I pray for all of those willing to stand in the gap for each other as the love of Jesus, that he would give us strength and courage each day so that we can stand in that gap when the road is long and we grow weary. Give us your rest, give us your rest, Jesus, in perfect shalom, as that shalom devours the chaos around us. Thank you. Jesus, for your love, your mercy, your grace upon us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing not for public comment. And we're getting close to our 30-minute timeline.
Lori Watts and Edward Ash.
Lori Watts isn't that here? Edward Ash? And the next person?
Next will be Daniel Correll.
Okay, Mr. Ash, you have three minutes beginning now.
I think today we need to take a step back and let's start being honest about some things. Today, we have a couple situations, but people are kind of blowing over the real situation, the real problem that we have at hand. I just seen a black man who said he was the chief of the police come up here and tell a bunch of things to make you all love the police, but the truth is that he just basically sold out. He's here to, to, to back the police of the things that they've done wrong. And they put a black man up here as black men and brown people are saying that the police have not been there for them and have not helped them. What good is it if we're having a problem and then we're calling on the same police who have terrorized the black and the brown community? When are we gonna start understanding that there's a problem that we need to adhere to? And the way to solve a problem is to go to the root cause. The Aurora police have affected the black and the brown community for many, many years. And to this day, we're still acting like they're perfect. And according to the chief's words, he says the Aurora police is perfect. According to the deputy chief's words, he thinks the same. According to my words, I think neither one of them know the law, and actually, I believe that the Aurora Police Department is a racist organization. And with that being said, there are things that are wrong, they are breaking the laws, and they are hurting the community. We had somebody come up here and say, oh, about 1996, but they didn't tell you about how much involvement the Aurora police had on bringing drugs into Aurora, on putting gang members against each other. They, they, they don't mention that, they're just trying to mention to you they don't want to go back to 96, but they didn't mention all the laws that the Aurora police broke in 96. They didn't mention all the, all the, all the things that bring engagement for the community. Basketball courts, playgrounds, parks, they banned us from all those things, took our basketball, basketball hoops away so we couldn't be in the, in the, in the environment, right? So I'm just telling you the truth. I'm not here to bash the police. I have some friends that are very high in the police, and I, I, I respect them. But what we do need to do, maybe instead of cutting some police, maybe we need to get rid of the bad ones. And we can start with these two right here, since they're the most high-ranking ones and they don't even know the law. Now, with that being said, the ones who, who allow these terrorist police officers to do what they do is the city lawyers. The city lawyers would allow, allow the police to think that when they're breaking the law, it's okay because it goes through many steps if you're suing. I think that's called abuse of power. I think the people who are in power need to stand up and start holding the police accountable because to this day, they have no accountability at all. God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. The next speaker, Danny Correll. You have three minutes beginning now.
Good evening. Thank you for everybody who just shared about, you know, the, the current condition of our unhoused neighbors and the risks that they face, and as well as our undocumented neighbors. My family came here many, many years ago, just like a lot of people's family here, and we took care of each other. And, you know, that's why I'm proud to be a resident of Aurora, because we continue to take care of each other regardless of, you know, status, undocumented status, documented status. We're all citizens because we're human beings, you know? And as human beings, we deserve protection that this country has afforded to us, especially under the Constitution, you know, that declares that all human beings are afforded these basic rights. So I appreciate what this young man said before me. I grew up in the neighborhood of the North Avenue and Kendall, and I know what he's talking about, right there in Hillcrest Apartments, Forest Ridge, or Woodland Apartments, or whatever anybody, anybody wants to call them. And we're all brothers and sisters, and I appreciate everybody taking care of each other, especially during this reign of terror by ICE agents and other people who, other, other police agents who refuse to get involved, claiming that they're, they cannot get involved in the protection of our constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Correll. We've reached the end of the 30-minute period of public comment. Next, we'll move to the public hearings. I'll ask the clerk, we have one public hearing tonight. Their clerk's ready, I'll ask their, or I can read it. It's, go ahead, if you're ready.
250897, public hearing regarding the execution of an ordinance providing for the execution of an annexation agreement with the owners of record providing for ORI Office Research and Light Industrial District with a conditional use zoning for the territory which may be annexed to the city of Aurora located south of Sunrise Road and east of Frieder Lane on vacant land in DuPage County, Aurora.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item only? Is there any member of the public who would like to issue public comment on this item only? Is there any member of the public who would like to be heard on this public hearing, on this agenda item only, or any members of the council who have questions or would like to issue a statement? Alderman Seville. With no further questions, there's been a motion to close the public hearing by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderman Franco. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuelos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
This hearing is adjourned. Next, I will ask the clerk to read the consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda in full.
250593, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $1,578,000 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and to approve a participation agreement between the city of Aurora and Hasset House for renovations to expand the family shelter capacity of Hasset House. 250625, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development and approving the Scooter's Plan description for the property located at 1329 North Lake Street. 250626, a resolution approving a revision to the final plat for Dolan subdivision located at 1329 North Lake Street and establishing Scooter's re-subdivision. 250627, a resolution approving a final plan for Scooter's re-subdivision located at 1329 North Lake Street. 250714, a resolution approving Petroleum Traders Incorporated Mansfield Oil Company and Al Warren Oil Company for the purchase of motor fuel for the city fleet and backup generators. 250782, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a five-year renewal subscription of debt books, lease, and subscription management platform in the total amount of $118,125. 250825, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to process a change order to the agreement with the two lowest bidders for the 2025 OnCall lead water service replacement contract in the amount of $450,000. 250833, an ordinance amending Section 2-65 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to Aldermanic Initiative Funds. 250835, a resolution authorizing the execution of the five-year agreement for arbitrage rebate compliance services with Hilltop Securities Asset Management LLC. 250839, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to order streetlight pulls from Gray Bar IT Task Illinois in the cumulative amount of $102,579.34. 250852, a resolution establishing 2026 golf rates at Phillips Park Golf Course. 250790, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, October 28, 2025, city council meeting. 250902, approval of the closed session meeting minutes of September 23, 2025, October 7, 2025, and October 28, 2025.
Okay, are there any questions or motions to remove any items from either the direct-to-council consent agenda or consent agenda? There being none, is there a motion to approve the items of both the direct-to-council and consent, consent agenda as read? Motion made by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll on both consent agendas?
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuelos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agendas are both approved. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item? Motion made by Alderman Seville?
Second.
Second by Alderman Barrero. Are there any questions or discussion on this agenda item? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuellos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
This ordinance is adopted. I'll ask clerk to please read the next item on unfinished business.
Twenty-five zero seven seven six, an ordinance providing for the execution of an annexation agreement with the owners of record providing for O R I Office Research and Light Industrial District with a conditional use zoning for the territory which may be annexed to the city of Aurora located south of Sunrise Road and east of Frieder Lane on vacant land in DuPage County, Aurora.
Is there a motion, a motion made by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderwoman Smith? Are there any questions or discussions regarding this agenda item? There being none, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuellos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. Ms. Clerk, please read the next item on the unfinished business.
Twenty-five zero seven seven seven, an ordinance annexing property being vacant land located south of Sunrise Road and east of Frieder Lane to the city of Aurora.
Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuellos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
This motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. Ask clerk, please read the next item on unfinished business.
Twenty-five zero seven seven eight, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development, approving the Sheila Brown Trust Property Plan Description and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of O R I Office Research and Light Industrial District for the property located south of Sunrise Road and east of Frieder Lane.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuellos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. I'll ask clerk to please read the next agenda item.
Twenty-five zero eight eight six, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Becoming Oswego Church for the management and operation of a temporary warming shelter on an as-needed basis effective November 4, 2025, through May 31, 2026, for an amount not to exceed $136,141.
Samud.
Motion made by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Are there any questions or discussion?
I have a quick question.
Alderwoman?
I hate to ask.
Alderwoman Babe?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, since we are changing the zoning of this property and currently it's like an office building, I just wanted to make sure thorough checking is done, like fire code and any safety concerns, everything will be checked before we house any guests.
Can I ask?
As I say, is?
He has looked, we have looked over the building already, so I'll let.
Yeah, just so you know, it currently has occupancy, but in, for a different reason. But go ahead, please.
Yeah, as the mayor mentioned, we did Saturday do a tour of the building, looked through the conditions of the building, which generally are pretty good. As I mentioned, the permit for this use there will have some conditions, being a fire watch and a limitation on the amount of occupants. That has to do with hardware that's there for egressing. It has to do with alarms, the alarm situation there. So that has occurred already, and we've determined what safeguards we need to put in place in order to have a safe occupancy there.
Does this answer your question, Alderwoman Babe? Alderwoman Smith?
That was exactly the same question I was going to ask, so thank you for answering that.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Garza? Okay, any other questions on this agenda item? There being none, I'll ask clerk, please call the roll.
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuellos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay. I'll ask clerk to please read the next agenda item.
Twenty-five zero eight nine eight, an ordinance restricting the use of city of Aurora property for civil immigration enforcement activities.
Okay, motion was made by Alderman Seville?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman White. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? I know there was discussion of a small friendly amendment while we were in executive session. I know that corporate counsel spoke with the deputy chief of police to come up with language. I'll ask the corporate counsel to please read that, agreed-upon language.
Yeah, in fact, John Seville, can you put in, put the document that we labeled Seville's amendment on the screen so everyone can read it with us? Thank you. So, can you make it bigger so that everyone can read it?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're all squinting up here, too. So, thank you. So, as you see, the first page is the same, and then the second page, we have, oh, you know what, with the SharePoint, it didn't redline, and I apologize. The, it added the same, at the very top there, the except as provided in subsection 40-3B. Any city appoint, can you see it or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, can the council member see it so you know what you're voting on?
Can any member not see it? We're all good?
Okay. And I apologize to the public, it's, I think as big as I can make it right now. And then, so that's the same change that Alderman Larson proposed previously. And then if you scroll down to paragraph B at the bottom, this is the language that deputy chief and I came up with to, that was discussed during the committee of the whole. And Alderman Seville indicated that this was consistent with what he wanted to amend. So, if that's the case, then.
Yes, thank you, Your Dana. And I think this does two things. It's two-pronged and meets the spirit of Alderman Lash's original amendment, and also in terms of effectively having the police department follow the procedures and adopt the policies and the like, which I think is really Alderman Lash's intent, or, I'm sorry, Alderman Larson's intent as well, sorry about that. So I think it's an acceptable amendment for consideration, and still meets the intent of what our constituents are asking us to do.
I'll ask corporate counsel, do we need a motion in second then? So the motion is to adopt the new language?
Some of.
Presented before the council.
That's fine.
Okay, so motion was made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Seville. Are there any other questions on this amendment?
Mayor, I have a question.
Alderman White?
So the Section B is clear. I see that change. What was the first change again?
So if you-
John, can you scroll to the, can you scroll to section A at the top? Thank you.
Yeah, so, oh, no, no, scroll down, John, to the top of the, there you go, right there.
Right there.
Okay, so the very first-
The part in red, okay.
Yeah, so, so I'm not sure why the red line disappeared once on SharePoint, but the first part, the except as provided in subsection 40-3B. And then, I also deleted the term officer. So after official, it just says or agent. Is that clear?
Does that answer your question, Alderman White?
That does, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this amendment? Alderwoman Garza first, Larson then Nunez?
Well, in my opinion, we have so many changes tonight, so many amendments, back and forth. So right now, I make a motion to return to rap, only to have more clear what we put in here, what is the amendments, and what is why we want to vote. I know, there's so many opinions, but in my opinion, we have to go back to rap.
There's already a motion in second on the table.
Go back to what?
Rap.
So there's a motion in second on the table, which we're discussing and acting right now. Alderman Larson?
Yeah, thank you. I guess the first point I'd make is I don't think this should go back to rap. I think people want this to be voted on as soon as possible. The second point that I'd like to make with the original motion that I made, I wanted to lay out a list of things that would be included in a report. I think there's a big issue, clearly, with a lack of trust in the Aurora Police Department. And if we have a very general amendment here that says that they will adopt their own policy and leave it at that, I don't think it addresses that issue. I think setting a minimum guideline is something that will help with the distrust in the police, so I will not be supporting this. I think we need stronger language.
Just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Line three, is that just a misspelling?
Possibly, very possibly.
I hate to be nitpicky, but just want to-
Very possibly. Line three, oh, wait, wait. Oh, observes. Yes, that is. I apologize for the typo.
That's all. We can change that clerical error. Any other questions on this amendment? So we're only considering just this amendment with the change to observe.
Okay, but I just want to second Alderwoman Garza's motion.
Well, first, let's get through this motion, and we'll entertain our future motions. Any other questions on this amendment? Okay.
Is there going to be a voting or?
Is anyone clear on the, sorry, go ahead.
Will there be voting or just?
Yes.
No, the motion.
So the first motion is gonna, so the first vote is going to be just on this amendment to include the changes in line A and then line B, with the understanding that we will change the spelling error on observes, and there is a duplicate capitalization that I saw in their office. We can change those clerical errors. So that is, it's just on the, the first vote is just on that amendment. So, there's no further questions on this amendment. I'll ask clerk, please call the roll.
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuellos?
Yes.
Smith? Bug?
Yes.
Babe?
Abstained.
Larson?
No.
White?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no, two not voting.
This amendment is adopted. So now, we move to the entire agenda item as amended. I don't know if there's been a motion in a second.
Yes.
Seville and White.
So there was an initial, okay, there was an initial motion to approve, Alderman Seville, Alderman White seconded it. Are there, are there any, sorry?
To bring it up on the table, a motion was made.
Wani made a motion before this.
We're going to get to that.
So, so the original motion was made by Seville and-
The motion to change, correct?
No, no, there was, there was an original motion to approve the agenda item, then there was a motion to amend. We've just voted on the motion to amend, and now Wani's, I'm sorry, Alderman Garza's motion to table, if there's a second, then that, then that's what goes.
So Alderwoman Garza, you're, you want to make a motion at this time?
Yeah, my motion is to go back to rap. We need a clear copy and understanding what we're doing. We want to do this, it's the first time for protecting our people, but we want to do it the correct way, and more clear, and more, all this is mess today.
Is there a second? So there's a motion to move this back to rap committee, is seconded by, motion was made by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Are there any discussion or questions on the motion made? There being none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll, and we are only voting on the motion to return this to rap.
Do we vote on that, or did it just turn back? According to Section 2-07, the referral of matters to committee C, at the request of two aldermen, an item shall be considered at a regular council meeting, may be postponed until the next regular city council meeting. During such postponement, the items shall be, shall be remained and, or excuse me, to and reconsidered by the appropriate committee. The aldermen requesting the remand shall appear at the committee meeting to present her reasons for consideration. The remand matters shall be immediately returned to council at the next meeting. There is no vote when we have a first and a second on a return.
Well, there's a, if the motion was made to exercise that rule, it's my understanding.
Yes.
If the motion's to table, it's different. So I guess we need some clarification on what the motion was.
What was the motion, Alderwoman Garza?
She's motioning based on this section.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do I need to walk it over to her?
No, it's fine. No, it's just, the discussion was motioned to table, so that's why. It's a different motion.
Okay. So next, we will move this back to the rap committee, and Alderwoman Garza, you will be expected to show up and explain your rationale for moving it back to the rap committee?
Absolutely.
Next, next we will, next I will ask the clerk to please read the next item on unfinished business, and I'll believe that a motion is in order by Alderman Franco for agenda item 250906.
250906, a motion to modify the voluntary reduction in force plan to applicable bargaining units.
Pursuant to negotiation with the city's various collective bargaining units, I move to modify the voluntary reduction in force incentive plan with respect to the following bargaining units. The Aurora Fire Officers Association, Aurora Supervisors Association for the Aurora Police Department, Aurora Firefires Association, IAF Local 99, and American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, ASME, Council 31 Locals 1514 and 3298, which units were not included in the original V R V RIF as follows. Severance pay shall be 10 weeks of base salary and shall be, in addition to any severance pay, the unit's members are entitled to receive under the terms of their respective collective bargaining agreements. Severance pay shall be paid in one installment in accordance with applicable law and applicable collective bargaining agreement procedures. The applicable health care period under the V RIF for the employer's payment of premiums for the continuation of coverage of the city's medical and dental insurance program shall be four months. Unit members have until the close of business on November 12, 2025 to submit their applications to participate in the V RIF incentive plan. All other provisions of the city's V RIF shall be in full force and effect. The mayor and/or his designee shall be authorized to negotiate and execute memorandum of understanding with the bargaining units and/or all other documents and agreements necessary to implement and effectuate the modification of the V RIF, consistent with the terms of this motion, and subject to review and approval as to form by the city's corporate council.
Okay, a motion has been made by Alderman Franco. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman White. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this item as read?